Okay, let's get started. Karen Hawkes is unable to join us, so I will be leading the meeting. So please share with me. So roll call. Karen Hawkes is not going to be here.
Scott Haiden.
And Scott. Do we have everyone else? Everyone else is here? Okay, great. I'd like to ask for an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from February 6th. Any discussions? All in favor? Abstentions? Right, good. And we have one adjustment to the agenda today.
Yes, if you can insert under 7A1, the topic we discussed in the past, law enforcement personnel and requests thereof, so I'll discuss that under my report.
I don't think anyone was signed up, but is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the board? Moving on. Oh, that's me. The board chair. In lieu of Karen, I would like to discuss the policy BEDH, public participation in board meetings. You had an exhibit in your packet. I just would like to summarize. We certainly encourage public participation at all of our board meetings, but I did want to bring to light that, remind everyone that the purpose of this board meeting is for us to conduct the business as charged by law. This is the only time that we're able to conduct business is when we're together as a board. And so certainly we invite people to come and speak during the time in the meeting when it's time to address, or bring the last piece of the agenda, whatever that's titled, person's desiring to address the board, cleverly titled. And, but there are times that we have a lot of business to take care of in a small amount of time, and so the chair at times is able to limit the amount of time provided to each of the speakers, ask that speakers try not to be redundant if there's a similar theme over and over again. Just want to remind people that confidential personnel information or student information cannot be discussed in public. And so I do think very often we hear comments from the public and we sit stoically, but that's because we literally are not able to comment or discuss. And I don't know if everyone always understands that. We will not tolerate gossip, defamatory comments, abusive or vulgar language, and it will be up to the chair to shut that down, and they will ask someone to stop their comments if that's happening. And that is within their right. And so really, we just ask, we love to hear from the public, but we just ask for common courtesy and etiquette when that, when they do have something to say. Is that good?
Very good.
Yeah? Okay. Moving on. Person number?
We have nothing under personnel with respect to resignations, nominations, or transfers. We'll go right to the superintendent's report. If Reagan said you'd be hearing upcoming proclamation, this meeting is Rob.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens and to meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate. And our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Rob. So now we go to the adjustment, law enforcement personnel and requests thereof. And I was just telling Amanda, you talked about a high sense of irony. I learned today that we have been contacted by the main Catholic schools and the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, school certification, and student exchange visitor program. The Catholic schools are going through their reaccreditation process. And one of the things that they have to document and prove is that public schools, like Hampden Academy, are indeed a recipient of students coming out of, in our case, Hall Saint School at Bangor. So Mr. Tracy did write a letter affirming that we've had students in the past, and we have met their requirement to notify them that we do receive those children. So I kind of chuckled to Reagan this morning, as you know, I've said to you in 29 years, 29 years I've never had this request, and all of a sudden, bang, in the last two, three days, I learned that that request had been submitted. So I inform you tonight, for the first time in my recall, that we have had that request and we did comply to acknowledge that we do receive those children on an application basis here at Hampden Academy. So that will appear on the agenda every week, okay? Okay, now, ED 279. Well, actually, I'll just get them certain. Legislature, I have chosen four or five to highlight to you, with you. The first one, the expand the rights of public employees. And also, I'm going to mention in a moment, we met with our town managers today, and I realized that now this bill being advocated for and being moved through a legislative process would allow teachers, employees, and public schools to strike. When I read the law finer today, it also includes public employees and municipal employees. So we had a conversation with our town manager today as to how that pertains to them. If you read the summary, it's pretty straightforward in the sense that this would allow and afford people to strike unless they are people in public service in the municipal sector. So we're watching that very carefully as that moves through the legislative session, because you may know historically, teachers in our profession have never been given the opportunity to strike. Okay, so we'll be watching that with a sense of interest. The next one, which actually excites me, is money being put in to expand or recreate school-based health centers. For you people that haven't been with us for a few years, this is one of my more significant figures, because we started a school-based health center probably about three years ago, and we had some money in each of the main health center, and they helped us, but we never got it off the ground. And we built the school down in the nurse office with the notion in mind that we would have a health center. And I'm hoping that sometime in the near future, two or three years, that we can bring that back, because they have some great opportunities for that to flourish in IRG 22. The next one is making up schools the additional days, and I'll make two points, one here later in the calendar. Let's first of all look at this year. We have missed five days. The issue is this. By law, seniors must go to school 170 days. Right now, we're at 169. So the administrative team met yesterday, and we're looking at some options, and next Tuesday, we're going to make our decision. In hair of the options, and not in a particular order. Number one, you go to school on a Saturday. Number two, you go to school on one of the days in April vacation. Number three, you add one hour per day in five days, and then you recoup the one day. I would say right now, with no certainty, we're probably focused on one hour per day, but we will make that decision next week, and that'll adjust our calendar. That's with the notion, we miss no other days. If we miss another day, then we'll have to come back and rekindle that and rethink that process to make sure that we're in compliance with the law with respect to 170. The other thing that would do, if you followed your calendar so far, I know some of you are planning vacation. As it stands right now, the last student day is Monday, the 17th of June. If we make that day up with the one hour a day, then that brings the last student day back to Friday and not to Monday. Okay? Everyone with me on that? So we have missed five days, which is pretty normal for us. We have missed three, four, or five days, four or five most of the time, and that's where we are. So we'll talk about that in a moment as well. So that's the notion there about making updates. The next one, if you've been following the news with respect to Scott Hagen, they've been talking, their board's been discussing this for years, and that is the Native American mascot in all public schools will not be permissible. So we'll follow that one. And then restricting cell phones by students while in school as well. So those are the three or four that I've chosen, and I know Scott and Elizabeth Hagan are very much in tune with these bills. Any question on anything else that you may be aware of that's happening in the legislature that you read in the newspaper or whatever?
What happened? Camden, Rockport, they were going to do that. They were going to do their makeup base, and it was going to be tried by the board of education. Have we heard anything?
Yes, we have, but we just received a memo, I think, yesterday. They have approved that.
They did approve it?
Yes, they did.
It was a digital date.
Yes, that's correct. Yep, that's correct.
What about the retirement costs?
Good point. The, yeah, what Jane's bringing up is the retirement monies, I can tell about three years ago, was all paid by the state, three or four years ago. And then they shifted those retirement monies over to public schools. And right now, we have to pay approximately $575,000 in our budget for retirement purposes. Now they're trying to move that away from school districts back to the state, and that's gaining some pretty positive momentum, matter of fact. The question becomes there, though, like anything else, is, as you were talking about on another topic tonight, where is the funding going to come from that, and how are the appropriations going to respond to that? But that's gaining some momentum to move those monies away from the public school districts back to the state. I'll keep you updated on that. Mary Ann?
So has the board ever, in the past, approved and voted on actually testifying in favor or against any particular bill? Do we ever take action as a board to support any legislation?
I'll start, and board members can chime in. My recall, that would be very rare. I'm not saying we've never done it, but very rare. What we usually do is we usually navigate that through the October board meeting, statewide board meeting, and the delegate assembly, where they'll have resolutions. That's where we weigh in and give our delegate assembly nominee power there to act on that. But other than that, I think we've been pretty much a recipient of the law. So some of the people who've been with us for a number of years might want to chime in and add on that.
We'll stay neutral.
Well, and honestly, I'd like to see us do that, but it's easy to say until we go around the room and realize that we don't all agree on that. So I think my opinion on that is if we can't agree on it, we should just leave it out of this room at least.
Okay. I was brought to my attention, though, that in that fall board meeting, I know in the past I've been one of the delegates that have gone and represented with a vote, but it sounds like we didn't have anyone do that this fall. So we should make sure that every year we have someone to do that.
That's a good point. That's a good point. So the next one, ED 279, I want to spend about maybe five minutes, and if you want to follow up on these with me individually, we can do that, and also Reagan is discussing these at the budget meeting. But I wanted you to have some familiarity with basically the most important financial document ever received from the state. Rob is very much in tune with this as well. And it's called the ED 279. And the front page is section A. I'm just going to kind of highlight some key points that are embedded in this formula. And the first one is that of pupil count. And the advantage of pupil count is they take the two-year average. So if a district has a declining enrollment, then they can mitigate the loss of money, but it all is on the student enrollment, and you can see our average is 2411. Then they give you ratios in part B, from teachers down to school administration. And if you go to the column that says total EPS for teachers at 146.4, we have actually 144. So we have less than what the formula identifies, and therefore we have to pick up some of those monies locally. So that's a delineation, and one that always, well, not always, one that often comes up in the public is school administration. Notice the formula, with the size of our district, actually allocates 7.9 school administrators, and we have seven. So that basically gives you the demographics, basically on teachers, guidance, and so on. Then you go down to benefits, that gives you calculations there, and then letter D, per pupil cost, respect to substitute teachers, supplies, and so on. All that then brings you down to the total spending, elementary and secondary, you can see is 11 million and 5.6 million. And the key figure in all of this page is the bottom line, and that's to calculate the EPS rate per pupil, elementary is 67.84, and secondary is 72.26. So now if you turn to page B, or letter, section two, you can see how those calculations come into play. So for example, in section two, letter A, we have the total of students. You can see, for example, in number two, where you have 92 students in four-year-old pre-K, 15, 36, K-8, 9 through 12, giving you a total of 2368. Then in B, see how the student counts come into play in that column from right to left, the second column. You have 67.84, the elementary, and 72, 26, the secondary, and then that gives you the computation as far as the cost you're having. So the pupil count and the EPS rate are two very key factors in the calculation of subsidy. And then you move to what they call weighted counts in letter C, and that's disadvantaged children. And you can see, for example, four-year-old pre-K, we have 25.8, but notice they reimburse you 115%. That's called a weighted count. 9 through 12, the same thing. You have 206, the weighted count, 7,226, the number of students is 224. So basically, the theme there is weighted counts. Following up on that, you have targeted funds. Those targeted funds, again, are categories leading with assessment, technology, resources, and the calculation there, and then you extrapolate out the total there, which brings you to the operating total allocation of 18,364. Okay? Now go to section three. Now you get into gift, in a talent, and special education, the same type of calculation, and then the inflation adjustment. Notice they inflate that. I think, Rob, you mentioned that last night, didn't you, in the budget meeting? They inflated it by a 1.70%. That was transportation.
Transportation was 2%.
2%, yeah. So this, and again, we don't need to get into fine tooth unless you want to come into the office, and we could spend four or five hours on this. But this will give you at least first blush when someone says to you, how do you get your money? When you take this home, have a cup of coffee, or a glass of wine, or whatever, and digest this. The takeaways are pretty simple, in the sense of understanding the moving parts. Pupil is one of them. Then you go to debt service. This shows you the debt service. Let's pick on Hampden Academy. We paid 2,36,000 for principal and interest of 577. Then you give the total debt service. Now remember, debt service is state and local contribution. And that's the, as you've heard us say before, to get on the school construction list, you have to be state-approved, which obviously Hampden Academy was, and that's where we're trying to get them to grow out whether it be projects in the next eight to 10 years. And they have the total combined there of debt service as well. Now you go over to section four. Here it gives basically each individual town, the number of pupils in the town, the percentage of the pupils per town, and then the extrapolation there. The other key notation right here is B, state valuation. Notice the state valuation gives you the average of three years. So here are the two significant moving parts, pupil count and state valuation. And you've heard me say before, where you want to land up an ideal case is your state valuation and your local valuation are somewhat equal. This year, the state valuation was, what was it, Reagan? 3.4? Is it that much? I can't remember what it was. You want, yeah. Anyway, those are moving parts that are adjusted every year, but now they average that out over three years. And then the other thing that happened this year, again, Rob mentioned last night because he studied this, the mill rate. The mill rate was 8.48, to this year, 8.28. That's going to suppress our local commitment this year as compared to last year. And then you get into the memory municipality and the mill rate there, and that totals And then section five, and I want to highlight section five because we reap the benefit here. If you look at number eight, regionalization, because we regionalized, we brought in $152,000 more than if we did not regionalize. And also, that also increases your reimbursement for central office administration as well. So in summary, I know there's a lot of blabbing, but in summary, pupil count, two-year average. Valuation, three-year average. No rate is set by the state. And you can see on page, on section five, notice our state share is now 68.37. It's right above the, slightly left from the bottom. That increased by about a percent from last year. So again, as Rob said last night, 66% of our money comes from the state. So that's an overview of what we call, and you hear Reagan and I quite often say, the 279. Well, this is what the 279 looks like. We live by this. The other thing that we need to make sure we, I accentuate tonight, the money associated with this bringing in about $750,000 of new state money for us next year has not been enacted by the legislature there. So these are preliminary figures that we're using to formulate our budget, but they have not been secured by legislative action yet. Any questions or comments with that very quick overview, but hopefully some salient parts that for you to integrate at your leisure. And Reagan will be talking more about these as we go through the budget process as well.
Why would they release something that's so preliminary?
Basically, to give us at least a first blush figure to put in the budget as a placeholder. I'd rather have this not enacted versus nothing. Believe it or not, I've gone to a budget meeting before in June when we never had this.
Couple of years ago.
Couple of years ago, was it?
Their target is mid-March, we always hear, so this one's only a week.
So again, if you'd like to spend some time with Reagan and me, just give us a call. We'd love to have you. Sit down with us two, three hours, or a couple hours, and go through it. If you want greater detail and a better understanding, because even with the length of my tenure, you really have to slow this down. There's a lot into this. But once you slow it down, look at the moving parts, it all comes together to hopefully make some sense. Okay? All right, let's see. Schedule, as indicated before, the Yankees have called me at the Florida next week, John, so I'm going down to spring training. So yes, I'll be on the town for eight to 10 days. I'll have to put that to John, because this knows that I don't pay attention to Red Sox. Okay, the town manager meeting today, we had a very good meeting. We had representation from each town. We met for about an hour and a half. I gave you the partial agenda we talked about. For the benefit of our audience, we talked about the enrollment, particularly the growth that we've seen of about 11% over 10 years, but also notification to them that our projected enrollment over the next eight years leads us downward to about 200 students. We talked about the strategic plan, the municipal overview assessment. I gave them the list of the assessments over the last 10 years of each town, because remember, we have two new town managers that met each other for the first time today, from Winterport and Hampden, and we had representation from Newburgh and also Frankfurt. Then we taught legislation, and three bills I highlighted was the 40,000 base salary for teachers. Then the one that we talked about, strike, and that's where I learned that that also pertains to municipal employees. And then back on Jane's question about the retirement costs, and we had a couple others that we talked about. Then Reagan went over the presentation that we did last night with the budget committee and gave them documents there. We also highlighted the very important dates coming up with respect to the ratification of our FY '20 budget. But it was a very good meeting. And the fundraising report, per board policies enclosed, you can see that many entities have been busy supporting our initiatives in the school district, just shy of $18,000 for this quarter. I'm sure some of you probably have been involved in some of those entities as well, so thank you very much for people's convictions there. And now we go to Sarah Lucas.
So as probably most of you know, there's the NEASC accreditation this weekend, and the reason, I mean, the reason we're here is because as a district, we really value student involvement in the school district, especially when people come to evaluate our schools and to just see what we have to offer. And I just wanted to let everyone know here, in case you weren't aware, there are some student groups that are going to be a part of this weekend, including ASB mentoring, which helps with students coming up from the middle schools to Hampden Academy. And it's basically a leadership program that you can join at Hampden Academy, as well as National Honor Society is going to be here as well with a, just to aid the evaluation committee that is going to be here, along with the mentoring people, which kind of overlaps mostly the same people. And I am part of a singing group called Chamber Singers, and we're going to be performing for the accreditation committee as well. And I think it's really important just that students are involved, especially when people are coming here, to see what we have to offer. And yeah, I think that more student involvement, like groups such as, you know, performing groups and clubs and stuff like that can present in future occasions, so that's what I have to say for that.
Lucas? There's one thing a student asked me to mention a couple days ago, and it had to do with tardies, the tardy policy at Hampden Academy. I believe it's, is it three tardies before a student receives a detention?
There's actually not a, there's no written, like you get three and you have detention. It's after three, we get a notice, like, hey, you know, you probably shouldn't have any, so I don't think we actually have a written amount. Three would make you lose an honor study hall, but.
Okay, yeah.
That's a better question for Mr. Reagan.
Something like that. They said that a lot of students are opting, when they get to around that number of tardies, to just stay absent for that given day, if they know they're going to be, you know, five minutes late. So I've heard of multiple students, you know, taking full absences as opposed to tardies. Something to think about.
Thank you, Lucas. I do want to congratulate Lucas. He informed me tonight he's going to be attending BC next year.
I would just like to say that I would like to follow up on that concern, and I'll have the behavioral review committee add that to our policy review.
Sure. Okay. Reagan?
I will project the monthly financials. So to give you the context for reading the monthly reports, we are at 65% of the school year attended already, and for the fiscal year that runs from July 1st, we're at 68%. So by those figures, we should have about 35% remaining in our accounts. And when we put that number up against what you're seeing for balances, I think we're doing very, very well, right on target in most of the lines. And we have special education, for instance, where we actually are ahead of the curve there, and so we've looked into that, and we know that that is because of some staffing differences that have occurred versus what we had budgeted for back in May and June last year. Coming down through, regular instructions doing very well, and I'm pleased to report that even though we know we're managing the additional amounts to negotiations, it looks like we're going to work that right down to the letter, and it seems like it's going to be fine. Other instruction are athletics and co-curricular. We still will have to pay the coaches that are coming out of our spring sports and any final winter sports that are being submitted to be paid. And Article V, student-staff support, those are our salaries for things like nurses, librarians, guidance counselors. So those are certainly on track. Our professional development that comes out of this article and our curriculum office, most of those items have been paid for already, except for salaries related to those areas. One thing I want to bring up about Article V that we are facing is that we have reached a shelf life with our technology, the student Chromebooks at Hampden Academy. You both probably experienced that. And so we have given out all of the extra Chromebooks we have, because we have motherboards failing. And the motherboards to replace them are $189. A new Chromebook is about $280. So we're, Nate came to see me on Friday, for instance. We're going to have to make a purchase to get through the end of the year with what we're seeing with some of the Chromebooks. So if you could pass on to your peers that just treat those Chromebooks with kid gloves for three more months, that'd be great. We'll see how we can get through there. System administration, the school administration, look like they're right on track as well. Transportation, we do believe that we're going to come out in the end a bit ahead with transportation, so we'll make those adjustments for next year, looking ahead. And facilities management, looks like we're going to be fine. We do have a couple of projects that we're now starting to talk about for June, because it looks like our balances are going to work out. We've been monitoring, because we have to replace compressors here at HA if anything fails with our systems, with the geothermal thermal heat pumps. And we're crossing our fingers, we will not have to replace another this year. Debt service will pay interest in May, and then school nutrition, we didn't have any funding. Any questions about our progression there? Okay, I do have an assistant superintendent report tonight, so I will pass it out, and any extras that come around, they can go up to the audience.
Actually, I have a question about the nutritional services. I know we're self-sufficient, but there's a thing I've been hearing on the radio where there, there's at least one bank that's offering to match student meal plan forgiveness, like if somebody's behind, people are going on their website and pledging, you know, 50 bucks to a student, and then the bank's matching that. Have we been approached by any banks locally, or any, or is that like completely handoff?
It wouldn't be hands-off. We haven't been approached, but I will tell you, we have had two donations this year from private citizens, one from Hampden situation where there was a staff pool, and so that contribution was made to our community for the lunch payout, and then a private citizen in Winterport. But I will be on the lookout for that. But I will be on the lookout for that.
A long time ago, Jason Sharp set up something, a cookie fund, because there were, there was an opportunity to buy cookies, and he wanted, he wanted there to be money somewhere. And I don't know if that ever got continued or if that just dried up.
I think that dried up. That doesn't sound familiar to me.
I mean, it's been a couple of years.
All right, um, so for my report, I just wanted to let everyone know that, of course, budget development continues, so that you have a context around it. We have completed a presentation of Articles one, two, four, nine, ten, and eleven thus far. And, uh, I'm pleased to say that those preliminary presentations, though we will make tweaks certainly as we move along, they've been quite thorough, and I think we feel quite steady about how we'll move forward and be able to, uh, have that be a good representation of what the final ask should be. Article six and seven are next, and that will happen on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of March. And it will be both system administration and school administration that will be presented. Uh, any questions about the way we're moving with budget this year?
Just a comment. I'd say that the splitting it up, giving us a little more time is allowed more time for conversation, question, interaction, and detail. We're not so rushed to get things out, so that's been nice.
Right.
I mean, comparison, I think, from last night, Rob, we're about two months ahead, are we not, as compared to last year? Is that right? That's that quantitative.
We got the ED two seventy-nine two months early.
There you go, there you go.
Uh, one thing I would, uh, say is that our attendance at the meetings has been low, but we have been monitoring the views of the videos from the budget meetings, and those are certainly higher than our attendances. But if you know people that are interested, um, students, if you know people that are interested in hearing about that, um, any staff members out there, uh, please invite people to come. We want to have that level of communication and presentation, so. Uh, building improvements, uh, Mr. Lyons and I went down to the Department of Education and spoke with the Director of Facilities, Scott Brown, last week. And, uh, we wanted to hear if there was going to be money in the pipeline for either school construction or for renovations through the SRRF money that is generally for small projects that, um, have different priority levels. Uh, we heard that for our school construction project, we were looking at money that is years away from being present for our SHU twenty-two, because where we are on the list, we have high schools ahead of us, and there are a significant number of schools' construction projects that have gone up in labor cost to the degree that the money will be dried up, um, before it gets to us. Uh, we also heard there is legislation in the works for twenty-five million towards SRRF funds, and so we're going to be watching for that. And if that occurs, we will apply as fast as we can to pull down those monies. School maintenance, we had a custodial workshop, and I wanted to let you know this because, uh, David Griner, who's our, uh, Director of Facilities, has done a great job working with main janitorial and our customer, our custodial teams, because we're going to try to have, uh, similar products in every building, use the same systems in every building, uh, go ahead and implement cleaning processes that are the same where it's relevant to do so, and try to save money, but also increase training productivity. So I can't say enough about our custodial teams. They were here. Um, it was definitely a snowy day that would have been, um, a challenge for people to get to, but, um, they were here and we heard a lot of good things. So I think we'll be saving money next year with supplies. And community relations, of course, you've heard this before, but Kelly O'Brien Weaver was, um, honored at the Hall of Flags of the Department of Education, so we went down to, uh, see her receive that honor. And then your link twenty-two should be in your mailboxes. Uh, we've gotten that winter edition out, and I hope that you find it interesting. And if there are articles you'd like to see or things you wish were represented in the link, please be communicative about that, because, uh, we make it what it is.
Thank you, Amanda.
Regan, I have a question. Um, being new, in terms of, um, the issue of Chromebooks, what budget, um...
What article?
Article one.
Five. Article five, student staff support, and that's where we have technology.
Okay, and when will be, when will that be heard?
April ninth.
April ninth?
And one thing I would add to that, we were hearing about student input.
Yes.
Nate Savage has done a nice job. He surveyed the student body about their interests in the technology they use, what functions they needed it to be, what did they like about the Chromebook, what did they wish they had instead. And I think we got a lot of great feedback. I hope that you found that people were committed to filling that out and felt it was worth their time.
So Sarah, you had, uh, talked to us at a previous, uh, board meeting about, um, Chromebooks versus another format. So that April nineteenth meet, April ninth meeting, might be a great meeting for students to attend, that, that particular budget meeting, to see if indeed, based on the results of the survey, whether there is support for switching from the Chromebook.
Yeah, definitely. I, I think that's a great idea. Talk to the, definitely my peers and get the word out about that.
Amanda, I wanted to, before I turn over, go back to Regan's report. We met with Scott Brown. I would encourage Regan and the board to keep an eye open when the next, um, phase of applications will be received with the Department of Education. It would be, in my opinion, very likely if you'll invite applications within a couple of years. So your position at number twenty right now, if you reapply in a couple of years, maybe with some optimism, you can move up to fifteen, twelve, eleven. That's exactly what we did here. Uh, it took us nine applications to have success for the Hampden Academy, so it's a long road. So just keep an eye on that, uh, and making sure that Scott Brown is there will be very important as Regan develops that relationship to keep an eye open to that.
So every time we apply, if we apply with the same needs and wants every time, does that, do we end up in the same place, or do we apply because we need more the next time? I mean, do we have greater student?
What I would do, maybe I'm gonna ask Rob to help, because his WBRC works in this. But basically, I always say this politely. Basically, you want to strive, you want to strive to show greater need every time you apply. So when you apply in two thousand, whatever it was, seventeen, here's our need. Now you need to ramp up the need more aggressively with validation and, and authority. I mean, but really make the, make the readers of those applications in twenty twenty-two see there's a greater need than when, two thousand seventeen. So for example, let's say miraculously your enrollment increased by a hundred kids. That's great. Or what we don't want to see, if you have roof problems or foundations, something, things like that. So anytime you can, you can ante up the, the need of the school, you're gonna have a greater opportunity to get, uh, greater reassurance on the, on the state approval. Did you want to add to that, Rob?
Usually the worst things are, the higher you go up in the list.
There you go, that's bottom line.
So like New Sweden, their roof caved in because of snow. There you go.
Probably a problem.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely.
But we did hear an interesting fact that I wasn't aware of, that if you are on the list and you don't get your project funded, if you have to make renovations in the meantime, because you have to get by, you are not penalized for doing so, and they will hold you at your current place and not... So that was good to hear.
And the other thing that you may decide down the road, you may, is if you don't get on the state list, what do you do, if anything, just locally? Cameron Rockport, back two or three years ago, had a twenty-six to twenty-eight million dollar school project that they funded locally.
About seven locally funded school projects within the last five years.
There you go.
I think people got tired of waiting.
Right.
And...
Yeah.
School trigger.
Thank you, Amanda.
All right, great. Uh, questions of board members? I, I don't know if I should have brought this up earlier, but, um, in April, we do the nominations and voting for the Chair and Vice Chair. Uh, you got an email from Karen, who said she is willing to throw her hat in the ring for the Chair position again. Uh, we need to vote, so if other people are interested, they can certainly, um, step forward as well. I will not, I'm up for reelection in November, and I will not be rerunning, so I will be stepping down as Vice Chair. So we will need someone to, uh, show an interest or be nominated and voted and agree to it, um, for the, at least the Vice Chair.
This is kind of comfortable spot. I gotta watch YouTube to see how I look from this angle. Cause I kind of like, I would, I would volunteer for that.
Again, it's a voted on, but so we have some interest. Typically, people show interest before someone nominates them.
Might get done by the right time.
I know.
There you go.
That'll be my platform.
Are you, are you interested in the Chair or Vice Chair?
So think about that. If you are interested or if you have questions, um, I think you could reach out to myself or Karen or Rick.
Yeah, particularly if you're interested in the Chair, because the, the number one question people have an interest usually is, Rick, tell me how much time's involved in this? So we can discuss that as far as how...
Depends on the year.
Depends on the year, and, and the, and the style of your superintendent. Obviously, uh, my style's gonna extinguish itself in the years. But we can, we can certainly talk about that if you have an interest to really understand what you're signing up for, or what you're expressing interest in.
Yes, I have a question. Um, each month, we keep getting these reports, and the overwhelming theme is vaping.
Yeah. Yes, what are we doing?
Um, I mean, uh, yeah, I guess. They crack it down more, and that's why it's popping up. I mean, the kids not learning their lessons.
I'm gonna ask Dr. Glenn Cross, then Mr. Tracy gives them this one, because, Richard, you had a, you had a presentation in your school last week.
Yeah, we did, and so, so we just wanted to, we had, we had, uh, a group of parents come forward with an interest in learning more. And, and I have to say, in the last two or three years, this has really grown. And, and to educate myself on the topic, because it was so new, I actually visited a vape shop in Bangor, you know, and talked with the manager, like, show me what this stuff is all about. And he was very gracious and, and did that, and I learned a lot. But, uh, like, in our school, we had, uh, three incidents this year. And, you know, three too many, in my opinion, but, but, uh, you know, it was shocking that it just, it just started showing up, you know, where, where it's so new. And, and so there was an interest in the community to learn more about, about the problem. And I think a lot of people were, were like I was, uh, a year ago, in that they didn't know a lot about it, right? What these devices were and how they were used and all that. So, so we had, uh, Brittany Lehman, uh, Dan Stewart come down, and, uh, two women, Lisa, Lisa's last name, escaped me right at the moment, and, and Roxanne Dubay from, uh, Bangor Health. And, and they gave a great presentation, forty-five minutes to an hour long, and it was very informative. But more importantly, they, they shared a lot of resources, you know, things that you can use to, uh, help families and students, uh, who may be facing addiction issues. They, they shared, like, some curriculum materials that, that you could look at, and it was, it was very informative. So I think the takeaway for, for us is that we need to do more to keep, uh, to keep the public informed. And I, and I think we need to do more, uh, as, as around an educational piece, in keeping kids informed about the dangers of this. So, so that's what I can share about what we had, you know, at the middle school level.
Mr. Tracy?
So we've done a variety of things. Unfortunately, this year, we've had two big events, where one was, uh, in one setting where eight students were suspended, and another setting where it was five or six. So those kind of really inflated our numbers, but it was a group that kind of, and there might have been one or two devices that were passed around, and so like, each one had one. So there's a lot of curiosity. One thing that, um, we try to do is talk to the students and say, why? What, you know, what's the draw? What's going on? What's, you know, why would you do this? Why would you do this at school? And a lot of them are just kind of curious and don't, they're not really thinking about the fact that there are so many other students in the building. They're like, I really kind of disgusted by that, and I just saw people in there doing this, and that's how we get a lot of our information. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to learn from the students. We also, Sergeant Stewart put something together that showed what the device looked like, what the juice looked like, what the refill cartridges looked like. We sent that out through our school messenger system. Um, we just purchased something called Vape Educate. It buys us twenty-five licenses, and it is a, for our next student that gets caught, uh, that we have to deal with, which I hope we don't have any, but it is a five-unit educational piece that they have to go through and work through, and it would be something that they would work through with our, uh, support staff. But it's one of those things where we're just, it's such a big thing now. Like, I think at the end of last year, we had a couple heavy hitters that we kind of found a couple of things from, and then it was gone. And then as soon as we got into this year, it's, seems like it's everywhere. Um, and they're doing it in places where they can't be seen and hiding it that way. So it's, it's very frustrating from our standpoint, and I try to, I try to convey that as I have the conversation with them, like, what you're doing in this building is, is not okay, and you're putting us in a rough spot. It makes it look like we're condoning it, because we can't do anything due in these certain spots. But I really hope the Vape Educate thing's gonna help. We talked about the Catch My Breath resources, uh, as putting that into our curriculum. Brittany Lehman was kind enough to have a wellness meeting and use that as a focus and bringing some of our high school educators, as well as our educators across the district, and trying to figure out where we put this in the curriculum and where can we put this to better educate students.
Sarah and Lucas, would you like to comment on that from a student's perspective?
I'd like to add something, because I did, uh, Wagner, we had, I attended the informational meeting. I think one of the things that I would recommend really driving home to parents is there's a misconception that the vaping is not harmful, in that, uh, a lot of the information that we learn is that's, that's not true at all. It's extremely harmful. It's not regulated. And there's so many things in it that nobody knows about, and there's examples where parents are like, they just think it's water vapor, or they're letting, their, parents are letting their kids do it willingly because they don't realize what it is. Um, and I think that's where there's a big misconception in why you're seeing, maybe you're seeing it in these kids, is because they don't think it's really a big deal when it really is. It's, uh, the levels of nicotine are all over the place. It's, um, it's not really, even when you look at the products, you don't see, you don't know how much is in it. So a information campaign, which was done at Wagner, and some information was sent home. I, I think that would be really helpful to, to get parents to understand more about what it is, because there are examples where parents are knowingly letting their kids do it, which is really scary.
Sarah, do you want to say something?
I think a lot of it does have to do with lack of information. And I don't think if there's, it's, it's a really hard situation to tackle, because I think you have, uh, for example, packets with information for the students to take, 'cause it is, that, that is the problem. Um, they're not gonna take them. I think that really has to be something maybe that's addressed in health classes, um, possibly in upcoming years, uh, so students can really get a scope of, of, of the real information behind the dangers.
Is this... So that program you bought, that's gonna be a requirement before they come back to school?
Uh, I think we would bring them back to school, but we would give them a timeframe to do it in, so we keep it to the same...
So they can learn about what they're putting in their lungs.
Okay, good. Mr. Rue, did you want to comment on anything relating to Reesbrock?
Well, I haven't dealt with any of the vaping as of yet. But that, I will say that we are gonna be, um, looking at in our health classes, looking at Catch My Breath.
Yeah, very good.
Talking about that.
Thank you.
It seems to me like, by the time the kids get to high school, the educational part of that has gone by. It seems like we should hit those kids by the time they're sixth grade, seventh grade, before they stop listening, and maybe show them that, we show, show them that it is dangerous so that then when they do get in that situation, they know it already.
Mary?
So we are, um, as Bill said, that we have, um, had a conversation at a meeting with the health of the teachers, or at least via email, to make sure that we include some of that in. And it, it has information for grade six, seventh grade, high school. And then it also has some PE components at the three through five levels. So we'll just tack that in as well, but, so that will be a district-wide.
I know these charts are meant to be really more statistical, but do we have a sense of, to Eric's comment, are these watermelon and blueberry? Or are we seeing cannabidiols and other things being used in the vaping pens?
We've yet to see anything other than a nicotine base in anything that we have confiscated from a student. But certainly the availability of the others is scary.
I know at our dinner table tonight, it'll probably show up on the March statistics. Um, I'll just say it was probably, um, an intentionally disruptive, uh, activity by a certain person, and my daughter clearly stated that it was, there were odors that were not watermelon or blueberry. Um, my concern is that it's, it's now being used for other things than, than what is being sold at the local Irving.
So in terms of, um, last year versus this year, in terms of, um, suspensions based on substance use, we are, right now, at the same mark we were at the end of... we are, right now, at the same mark we were at the end of last year. So, we are definitely seeing more. We are tracking this in the Behavior Review Committee, so. Are we done with that?
Uh, yeah, we're still on questions for board members.
Okay, so, I just have a question. I may have missed this, because I, it went kind of fast. On the law enforcement personnel request thereof-
Yes.
I didn't catch whether there was any.
Well, we had a request from various agencies, whether the Catholic schools, they're going through their accreditation process. The question asked was, do you accept students from the all-sink school? And the response was yes. We had no visitation. It was through correspondence, that would mean? Yeah, we had no visitation. It was correspondence to Mr. Tracy. Mr. Tracy responded. And it was, again, it was a byproduct of the-
So, there was no real, okay.
No.
One of the things that I'm particularly interested in are the number of truancies that you actually will send out to law enforcement agencies to follow up on.
Yes.
So-
Yes.
Just, have there been any in the last month that have gone on?
Yes, matter of fact, I have one tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
Okay.
I've probably had in the last month, I've probably had six to eight. That's another issue. And the other thing that's frustrating is that out of those six to eight, four to five don't show up, have the meeting. And the Sheriff's Department of Waldo County has been a tremendous resource this year. I wish I could remember the gentleman's name, but he's actually had home visitations, because I call him and say, Sheriff John or whatever. And he actually goes to the home to seek the parent or guardian down. The other thing that, down the road, I'd like to see, maybe Joe can talk to this, I'd like to see greater of the truancy law at the court level, too, because right now, that's highly ineffective, in my opinion. So, there's a lot of moving parts there. But, we're seeing more truant students. We're seeing parent guardians who are not involved. And therefore, you have those children, they become totally disengaged. So, it's kind of similar, well, it's not similar to the vaping thing, but there's some pockets there that we need to rectify, that we've seen some very concerning points.
And just remind me, what, at what point does a child become truant? How many days is it-
Mr. Tracy, remind me.
It's ten.
Ten?
Ten unexcused days, that is a truant student.
Out of how, in consecutive or just total, out of the whole year?
Well, as soon as they hit ten, they become truant. And I think the way it works, you have to open the case at that point. And then, if they can show that they were somewhere and have information in front of them, that closes it. Then, if they get to ten again, they open another case. It really is, it's frustrating, as Sir Andrew Lyons says, is that there's no teeth behind it for us to do anything except to try to have more meetings and get people to come in.
You say unexcused, though, Bill. So, what is an excuse? If a parent calls and says-
So, personally, if you look at our policy, it defines what can be excused and what can't be excused. But, yeah, I mean, ultimately, if we have a notice that so-and-so was sick this day, then we excuse that. But, you know, we've had frank conversations with parents that say, there's kipping. I haven't seen them in days, or something like that.
So, what does that mean for graduation, ultimately? I mean, if kids miss a certain number of days, by law, they have to either prove they've done the work or-
Well, Bill, remind the board, there's a number of instances where they don't gain the credit. Remind us on that.
So, we have a practice or a procedure, H A, that says, once you've hit, I think it's eight, in a semester-long course, you lose credit for that course. You can go through an appeals process with the principal. It's your long course, and it's twelve, I believe. I could be wrong on that nine or thirteen. But, it's right there. But, the idea is that usually, anytime I've met with a student at that, I say, okay, next semester, you meet your attendance requirement, and we will give you those credits back. That is a huge, huge conversation that we need to have in the long run. Because I don't know that it is right for us to do that or remove credit if they're passing that class, which is an interesting thing.
So, every month, are you actually sending out truancy letters, literally every month, these letters are going out?
We notify, I establish the meeting with the parents. Hopefully, they'll show up. We hopefully resolve the situation. If they do not show up, then I send the letter to Waldo County Sheriff's or Penaltz County Court, and then it's in their hands. Because it's a civil offense for a parent.
How early in the school year, in this past year, when was the first letter that went out? I'm just curious how quickly this occurs.
Probably within the first month, because you have students that they're supposed to come, but they never give us documentation of where they're going. And so, we've tracked them eighth grade coming up, or from the zero four up. And until we get documentation where they are, we have to, we have to track every day. So, it can come pretty quick.
Eric, it's not uncommon to see early October to answer your question.
Thank you. For the suspension information, what warrants a parent conference? You're just noticing Wagner, it's with everything, there's a parent conference. It's like a routine for you.
Yeah.
But, with the other two, it does not seem to be a pattern, or maybe it was missed? Is there a scenario that does that?
One thing that we try to do is we try to put a little, put more responsibility on the student. So, if there are minor things, we have the conversation with the student with the expectation that they need to have that conversation at home. If there are things, there are suspensions, certainly we'll call. But, if there's a Friday detention, there's a letter sent home. But, it just really depends on what it is, whether or not we'd be that parent conference, or whether it's just something. And if the student had an academic detention because they didn't do work, chances are they stay and do that work and take care of it.
So, for an in-school suspension, what's the process to inform a parent?
We almost never have in-school suspensions, because we don't have anyone in the staff. It's just not an option.
So, what's the process to notify a parent if they're on a school suspension?
Uh, we would contact, when the event happens and the student's gonna be suspended, we immediately call and get someone on the phone and say, hey, here's what's going on. This is why the student's being suspended. We're coming to pick them up. Can we, we'll have a conversation. So, any suspension is a conversation, that one.
The other thing, Jessica, to follow up on that, if a student is suspended the second time, they meet with the superintendent schools, they and the parent, parent guardian.
And for Reeds Brook, if it's an in-school suspension, which I do use, then it's automatically, I call it home, we talk a letter over phone. If it's something that is a little bit more grievous, we'll say substance abuse, I always have a parent in for a meeting. And we talk about, here's an outside of school suspension, here's a reason for why, how do we get some help with the kid? So, but, everything's always followed up with writing to the parent. And if any kind of suspension at all, I talk personally with them.
Can I just ask, in the Wagner, the grade was omitted on the student category. Could you just maybe highlight, is this upper-middle school grades? Or is it across the board, all?
It's across the board. Does the grade is not listed on there?
It is not. Not in this, it usually is, but this month it was not.
Okay. I'm not sure why that happened. That should be listed on there.
So, it's not a trend, it's just multiple grades?
That's correct, yeah, that's right. And just a comment on the parent conference. I just think that's good practice.
No, I completely, I appreciate that. I like that.
So, I do that as much as I can. And like Mr. Rue, all suspension, in school or out of school, are, you know, parents are notified in one form or another. Usually by phone call. Sometimes, occasionally, I can't get ahold of someone for whatever reason, so I'll send a letter, like that sort of thing.
Okay, great. Any other questions of board members?
I find it interesting that none of the suspended high school students are seniors. They're all younger than you. It's either maturity or senioritis. I'm not sure which one it is.
They're better at hiding.
Yeah. Or you beat it into them, Bill, either way.
They have a hiding space.
Yeah, that's true.
Prison, not accounted for.
Okay. I just want to bring to everyone's attention, we do have an executive session that we'd like to get into later than nine o'clock. So, for the rest of the agenda, we would love to get through this in the next hour. So, with that being said, committee reports, finance committee.
All right, I'm ready. So, we met February eleventh. It was a brief meeting, discussed our Warren article expenditures. The members of finance committee received a hot copy of the district audit. It is on the website now, so if anybody is interested in that and you may even have some copies if somebody wanted a copy of it, it's a hot copy. We talked about one of the findings, reconciliation timelines, and it was just an issue with a new accountant learning system. It's already been fixed, and she's working through that already. So, it was maybe an issue at the time, but a non-issue at this point. We talked about what we're looking about, what we want future meetings to look like, and we decided we did want to go forth with having monthly meetings, even though we sometimes don't have a lot to talk about. But, it was good to take a little bit of time to review what things were looking like and keep an eye on that. And that's about it. We discussed, Jim brought up, talking about paying referees through arbitrarney. So, that might be something we want to talk about in athletic meeting, talk about this, probably is something. That was it.
Great. Budget committee.
Other minutes attached to the package from February, it's approved as yesterday's budget. And as Regan reported earlier, we're moving along, I would say, ahead of schedule. Yesterday's meeting covered Articles one and two, and really nothing to add. I think it's been well discussed previously.
Yeah, and well organized. Thank you. Athletic committee.
We met twenty-fifth of February. We had a multiple agenda meeting, but we really only got to a couple of things. We met with the middle school athletic directors and the middle school administrators, and talked about the differences between Wagner and Reeds Brook as far as athletics go. And they are quite different. They're in different leagues. Wagner is in the PB, Penobscot Valley League, where we play in Eastern Maine League. So, we played different teams. We talked, one of my concerns was that some of the teams weren't getting as many games as maybe Wagner was getting, I mean, Wagner wasn't getting as many games as Reeds Brook. And I'd had some discussion with parents about that. We talked through that a little bit. One of the reasons being is there's, it's harder to get teams in that league. Sometimes, they don't have two teams, or sometimes they don't even have a full, you know, a complete team. So, it's hard, but they were gonna work through some of that and see if they could work around some of that. It was actually, we had a lot of discussion, just put a bit there. I encourage you to read it all. I'm not gonna go through it line by line. But, it was a really good meeting. It ended up, we talked a little bit about preparing students for high school athletics and maybe vertically aligning the organization so that the students were more, the students, the coaches were working on more of a vertical alignment with the high school. So, the spring, Fred's gonna have a roundtable session with the high school coaches, the middle school coaches, try to get them all on the same page. And then, we tabled all pain. We didn't have much time to talk about the gym or naming rights, but we'll be on that soon. One other thing we did talk about, the middle school athletic directors, was the need for the athletic trainer at that level. We've had it there before, and they really missed it. It's not happening there this year. So, that's something we may think of in budget process. That was it.
Great. Building committee.
We haven't met since the last board meeting. We'll be on a meeting tomorrow.
Okay, great. Negotiations, I do not believe is an ad. Education committee, we met before this meeting. There were two major things on the agenda, one being a presentation from Ruth Lyons, who may or may not still be here, about the gifted and talented program. She did provide a PowerPoint, which would summarize the presentation. I don't know if it was in our packets or not, but we could probably get that dispersed if you guys are interested in it. We, I think one of the big takeaways with that conversation was our standard to, so gifted and talented is the top five percent. They need to be in the top five percent of the district in order to qualify for gifted and talented. And essentially, on standardized tests are the assessments that they use to identify in our district because we have such a large group of very talented, high-performing students in order to even meet that top five percent. You're in the ninety-eight percentile of these assessments, which is pretty high. It would not be that high in other districts. We had asked just, on average, or generally speaking, where would other districts fall in the top, for the top five percent of their performers? And on those assessments, it could be anywhere from about eighty-five to ninety-two percent of the assessments. And we're at ninety-eight percent on our assessments to meet that threshold. So, a lot of smarty pants in our district. The other piece was, we heard from three different departments at the high school, science, technology, and English. The theme there is they're really trying to expand the services offered and meeting the kids where they're at, offering courses that are appropriate for the children's academic path and capacity. So, they're doing some shifting, jump in, Bill, anytime. But, they're doing some shifting in the science department, allowing for a better match for science track, not tracking, but for science courses. So, we have some accelerated courses and then some more remedial courses for people who perhaps aren't going on to get a biology degree. But, those kids who are really interested in biology or some sciences and would likely go on to advanced degrees with that have some more accelerated options. Looking for technology to add three new courses, robotics and engineering courses, which is certainly a student need and interest, as well as just a need to prepare our kids for the future. In order to do that, we're shifting some of the resources that are coming available. And so, at this point, they don't necessarily need more FTEs or more teacher spots, but it will be reallocated. And the last one in the English department, which I thought was the coolest, was they're doing a new class, the Stephen King class, right? A whole class on Stephen King books, which is very cool. And of course, they need to reach out to Stephen King, I think, to tell him about it. So, I think the big, the final question for me in that meeting was, what do they need from us? And Bill's answer was, they need flexibility with both endorsement and perhaps with some financial flexibility, depending on the enrollment of the kids in these classes. So, they will keep us informed as to the interest in these classes. Yeah? Did I miss anything? Mary?
I just have a question in terms of flexibility. Let's say there is an overwhelming response. Would a contingency fund, which you talked often about, Rick, be able to absorb any additional stats that might be need to support these programs?
First of all, just to clarify, we don't have a contingency fund.
I know.
We have a contingency theme. But, the answer to your question is yes. Matter of fact, we illustrated that this year. We hired a one FTE made up of social studies and ELA this year, Bill, right? It was not in the budget. So, yes, we do that. And we've been, I think we've done a nice job with that, absorbing that in the budget, if you will. Yes.
So, the question is, is it, would it be needed as a contingency item, a little extra?
Well, we would fund it in that salary line, and hopefully, the salary line's gonna be able to absorb it.
And the other part of that, too, is there's another, so many other things that go into that with sign-ups, tuition students, numbers of, I mean, we don't know our total until we get much closer.
The other thing that often happens, to follow up on your question, Mary, and the other thing that often happens is, particularly in education only, when we have a child that moves into our district that comes with an IEP, individual education program, and has a one-to-one tech, we don't have that in the budget. And so, we have to absorb that. So, the contingency theme is embedded throughout the budget, is what I'm saying. But, you have to then allocate it in the line you have to expend it from. And that's why, that's why we move monies, at the end of the year, we ask you to move money from here to here, usually to cover the very essence of the question you're asking, usually.
So, that's already in place?
That procedures are already in place, yes. What I'd like to see, this board, two, three years down the road, is have a contingency line like we used to have three or four years ago.
So, why don't we have that?
In a sense, we do. We have an unallocated fund balance that rolls every year. It's basically maxed out at the three percent cap. And if it exceeds that, we have to pay it down. So, I mean, we're essentially carrying a rolling three percent based on past spending trends. So, we get to the point where we were fifteen years ago, where we were nowhere near-
Yes.
Three percent, we were deficient. That's when I think we're missing the target. Efficient, that's when I think we're, we're missing the target on budget. But the past four years at least, we've been hitting or exceeding our three percent cap. And in my mind, that means we're able to take changes from last year. I expect to teacher hiring, for instance, that occurred over the year. And as we develop this year's budget, we already have them included, but we also are able to take any excess and use that to pay down.
That's not the same as a contingency fund.
Correct.
Because you're on the rise to expend a contingency fund during the budget year.
Right.
And the unexpended fund balance just sits there enough off the right to spend it unless you do something. Can I, look?
That's correct.
If there was a town manager that didn't like that principle, he wanted the extra money allocated to each line item and not just a blank slush fund, if you will.
And I guess I just want to follow up that, and the board understood that argument and that's why they decided to go that way?
They, they respected that argument and so instead of saying, we're just going to have an extra $1 million laying around, we said, okay, we're going to have an extra $50,000 in transportation, we're going to have an extra $5,000 in heating oil, and we put our contingency or our slush fund into each line item so that it was better budgeted.
And that's true of personnel too?
Yes, it's true. All throughout the budget, yes.
Okay.
Now, I'll give you a contrast. When I was the superintendent in VZI, VZI had a contingency line in their general budget and they also had a contingency in their special ed budget. They had two contingency lines. You might want to examine that in the next one or two years as you begin to formulate new budgets.
And we don't always get it right and that's when we see board approve transfers from one warrant article to another.
Right.
And it can't exceed five percent for transfers in the warrant article, so.
And the bottom line, the summation, is it's illegal to overspend the budget.
Right.
Well, it's illegal to set a budget for something other than your needs.
Right. That's right.
All right. Policy committee?
So we discussed a number of issues at the policy meeting. It's pretty much listed in the minutes. A couple of them will be, you know, put forward for second reading, one policy put forward for first reading, we'll talk more about that. We did look at tweaking the superintendent evaluation guidelines based upon the recommendations that they had half committee to make things a little bit more smooth because, you know, there were certainly a lot of comments about making that better. We, you know, we're going to be talking, we talked about medical marijuana, talked about medical marijuana policy, we'll be talking about that more next month or next week. And talked about the school volunteer regulation in terms of adding child protective investigations, substantiations as part of the investigation in addition to criminal background checks.
And I remember I owe everyone the updated superintendent evaluation corrections that we talked about. Great. Great, thanks. UTC?
Yeah, the board met last night and I guess there were just two major topics were the CTE funding, which UTC has lost money this year from what they had last year. State is using some formula that's not at all transparent, you don't know what to do. But soldier on what we have. And then we, they also talked about the Skills USA competition, which starts tomorrow. And the real activities are on Friday. If anybody has time and wanted to go to UTC to view some of them, you can. And they will be completed by noon, so you want to get there before noon time. But, you know, I don't have a complete list, but I know there are a number of students from, in the academy that are taking part in those competitions.
So Alan, if they lose funding, even a small portion of the funding, how is that going to, how do you see that affecting our students?
I don't see it affecting our students at all. They've been very resourceful with working around those funding issues. And, well, they're doing like we do, they're dipping into their unexpended fund balance or the board is approving that to get some of the money back. Plus although the amount they were given as regular educational money dropped by 200 and some thousand, they were given an additional 200 and some odd thousand to start two new programs. Well, of course, so basically that gets them back to where they were, but trying to start two new programs with the same budget they had last year, so.
What are the programs that they want?
Well, one of them is a medical program, medical assistance.
Yeah, MA first.
And during the school vacation, a week or two ago, the entire staff came in and rebuilt a room, the classrooms, that looked very nice. They tore out some old office space and built a whole new classroom for that part. And the second one, I don't remember if it's a business program or whatever, but it's two programs that they're screening.
Great. I know we cannot get MAs, medical assistants, fast enough.
Right now, a student in two years at UTC can come out with their CNA, their CRNA, their medical assistant, and a couple of other things, all, all before they get out of high school.
All right. Thank you. Behavior review committee?
Yep. So we met on the 28th. I apologize for you not getting the minutes in time for this meeting. The agenda was preempted by a student behavioral concern and after quite a bit of discussion, a decision was made to contact the student's mother to discuss alternatives. Given the constraints on time at that point, the committee looked over revisions to policy JK and they were approved to be sent to the policy committee for consideration. A date was set for the dropout prevention committee meeting, that'll be May 23rd. Nick Raymond is going to serve as the faculty member. Renee Light, a parent from the Smith School, who will also have a student next year at the Wagner School, is going to be our parent member, a Carver parent, is going to be our community member. But we still need members to represent teacher counselors, student, and if possible, an individual who actually dropped out. And so we'll be working on finding a way to maybe identify that person and see if they might be willing to join us on that committee. And our next meeting will be March 28th at 1:30. Right here?
Great, thank you. We still do not have an education foundation.
We do not.
And it would be so cool if when Karen was gone, we got that vacancy filled. Does anyone want?
Are you nominating Karen?
Not here. Scott, does anyone interested in serving on the education foundation?
What does that mean?
When does that mean, do you know?
I don't think they have a regular schedule, to tell you the truth.
Whenever you can get there, Tony, maybe this one maybe.
Well, I'm not, not batting so great with the other two subcommittees I have, I was just curious.
I'll try to find out. Peter Witt, last time, and I haven't talked to Peter for a couple of months. Last time I knew, he was the, the chair and the president of the foundation. I'll try to find out.
I mean, I'll serve as a talking point between the board. I don't know.
Right.
Because a lot of meetings went there during the day.
Right.
I'm booked so far out.
Well, let's see what I can find out.
That sounds like a volunteer to me, right?
If we can't get somebody that would go regularly, I mean, maybe one board member per month, you only have to do two every year.
They meet in a diagram.
I'll see what I can find out. I'll bring that back next.
Let's print some Tony down.
As long as it's not during the business day.
Okay. All right. I'll follow up on that.
Maybe I'll make those meetings since I can't get athletic.
There you go. Spurs board has not met. We have a meeting on March 28th. Wellness committee?
I don't believe they've met though. I could be wrong.
Okay. Community relations?
We haven't met that in about six weeks.
Right. I would like to share tonight that Scott and I have talked and due to a family situation, he's going to need to move away from being chair. So we would be interested in seeking a new chair for community relations.
I feel like we lost.
Who else has all met me unless anyone else?
And you're already chair of education, right? So I'll, God, volunteer for that.
All right.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, next up, policy considerations. So you look at your board packet, number, or letter A is discuss and act on second reading and adoption of policy JIH, questioning and searches of students and property.
So moved.
Second.
Do we need to talk about it at all?
It's the same as it was before, no changes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? No? All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, great. Moving on, discuss and act on second reading and adoption of policy EEA EF, student discipline on school buses.
Can you just say that again?
Seconded. Again, this is the same as it was before, no changes.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Okay. And the last one, discuss and act on first reading of policy IJOA, field trips and other student travel.
So moved. Just to give you a little bit, this was, the reason this came up was we started taking a look at field trips after there was the drowning incident down in Southern Maine. And we worked off of a draft that the Bangor School Department had hired in terms of preparing for them, which was about 40 pages long, give or take, but no, it was extraordinarily lengthy. We parsed it down quite a bit, put more of the specific detail to allow the administration to put that into a regulation. And the reason why we didn't put in as much specificity, which this still does have quite a bit, is that we felt it was important not to be putting in standards that could then get us in trouble with the insurance company. And Regan had had many conversations with the insurance company on how to make this flow through and work. So that's how we kind of came to what we have now for the policy, the proposed policy.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I do. And it may be that I'm not remembering correctly, but I thought somewhere in here we were going to put something about the school nurse being consulted.
That was going to go in the regulation.
Prior to?
That goes in the regulation.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that was first reading. Are we ready to take a vote? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Okay. Great. Moving on, we have nothing under old business. No? Okay, good. On to new business. Discuss the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act of 1974, 20 U.S.C.
This was, this was a request from a board member. I've given you a lot of information on the act, like any other particular law, there's a lot of definition, a lot of issues in that. So I guess basically it's probably a Q and A if anything that people have.
I was curious about the, what I didn't see in either of the two attachments was the reference to the business of video camera footage being part of the educational record if it's used for disciplinary purposes and the rights of parents to view those records.
Well, probably getting back to Joe's point, about 45 pages long, I'm giving you probably one-fifth of the laws that might be embedded somewhere else, Mary Ann.
Yeah.
Fortunately, I'm going to go back to probably say the same thing I said with respect to the report I gave tonight about the agencies. It's very rare you get into the depth and breadth of the, of the, of the particular law. When I do, either I read the law and/or consult with the attorney, because every situation is entirely different based on the scope of the issue at hand, if you will. But I think this is a pretty good guidance. One thing I did want to accentuate, I think someone asked me this on the second page, schools may disclose without consent of parents direct reinformation. We do put on our forms that we have parents sign off on. If they want to not disclose, they do have that right or given the right to make that, not to make that happen. So that was a point that someone asked me on.
Mary Ann, in regards to the school bus videos, I did a little research and I'm not, this is not a legal opinion, so I want that to be clear, but I did a little bit of legal research on it. And one thing I noted was that there was a seminar from a few years ago where that was a question that actually often was asked of school attorneys and the, and the answer was, it depends, because the Department of Education, federal, has not given clear guidance. And, but, so it used to be, no, you couldn't be looking at these videos. Now it seems to be, yes, you can if they're digitally altered, but they haven't really come out and completely said that. So it's a gray area. So I, some things you just don't have answers for.
I think the bottom line, summation for me as your superintendent, if I get into a situation where it's not clear for me, that's where you call the attorney and spend the $250 and make sure that you have the guidance to do it appropriately.
Just Malpractice Insurance is a very good thing.
So the reference that we were all sent was, is a fact sheet from the Department of Education. And they're quite clear that if it's a record that was used and if, even if it can't be digitally altered, the parent still has the right to look at it. Now, that's a fact sheet, but it is from, you know, the horse's mouth, so to speak. So I'm curious whether we need to get clear ourselves in terms of, I, I went and looked on our website and we have the references, but, and policy is pretty much saying that we follow the law.
Right.
Is there any need for us to get any clearer?
I would say no. I'm not an attorney either. And I say no quite confidently because the dimensions of this are fast. We could sit here and in two minutes come up with 35 different themes. They would have 35 different answers, kind of like what Joe was saying, relevant to what's the question at hand, what's the theme? And that's where either you contact Department of Education, have their own attorney, or our school district attorney to guide us in that. Fortunately, knock on wood, it's very rarely used with respect to trying to figure out the answer to the question being posed as it relates to FERPA.
I just would.
Matter of fact, excuse me, matter of fact, Tony mentioned something a few minutes ago. We had a former board member that the board knows back quite a few months ago, requested a vast amount of documents from the financial ledger. We had to consult our attorney to guide us on that, which we did.
Are you going to move on? Yeah? All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't introduce our new administrative assistant, the lady right up back, okay? Amber Peterson. Amber is going to be our new administrative assistant with Mr. Rue at Reeds Brook. And I believe she, Amber, you've already started, correct?
I, I did officially start Tuesday, but I've been sitting there for almost three weeks.
Okay, so you will, you will see her at Reeds Brook every day, I'm sure. So congratulations, Amber. Thank you.
Next up is always a proud favorite, the school calendar.
Okay, let me take this year first, okay? The current year that we're in, you can see my pen scratching, which I, I'm not very good with technology, but works that work. So I would ask permission for you to allow me to adjust the calendar after I have affirmation with the administrative team next week as to how we're going to make up that day. Let me give you my opinion with the, with the option to change after next Tuesday, but I think we're going to land on going the one hour a day for five consecutive days. So for example, if you look at April 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, if we go those five days and an hour longer every day, then we've met our obligation. So if you're okay with that, I'll make that decision with the administrative team next week and notify our public well in advance when we're going to do that. And I think that's where we're going to land versus going to an April break or some other option.
All the students or just the seniors?
All the students, because that's a good question, Bill. So look at the calendar. If we do that, and if we have no more storm days, as I mentioned earlier tonight, the 17th becomes the 14th as the last student day for all kids. And then 170 will be in compliance with the June 9th graduation. So it'll be all pre-K through 12 students.
So turn an 80-minute period into a, what, a 95, or how does that work?
Mr. Tracy, if we went an hour longer a day, what would be your vision as to the implication for you in the academy?
It would probably be a matter of shifting those same periods that are already existing in the afternoon, but I would need some time to prep that and decide with our team what would be best, for sure. would be best, for sure.
Okay. And the other question?
Is that the target, is the first week in April?
No, I just use that as an example. When we did, Mr. Lauer did bring up the point, he said, "Good one, we want to try to get ahead of the curve before sports, spring sports." So we'll, once we decide next Tuesday, I'll let you know what week we're landing on, what days we're landing on. Okay? Any other questions?
Let's only know if we have another missed school day, right?
No, that's where, that's where we are right now. We are, if you look at my pen scratching, you see one sixty-nine on June seventh?
What are you looking at?
Maybe I didn't give it to you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I saw something.
I'm cheating you then.
I'll get draft next year.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll send the extra around.
Okay. No, I should have given this to you. June seventh, which is a Friday, is our hundred and sixty-nine day of school, or one short for seniors. So we need to pick that up right there, okay? So the long share of it is, we need to make up a day for seniors. And getting back to the question, we will do that for all students. We'd adjust the calendar for all students. And once we define the days, I'll notify you folks and notify the community as to what those days are. Okay?
I can't wait to take that one.
All right, so that's that. Well, I tell you, the kid, I had lunch at the high school yesterday, I had a number of kids come over to me and ask me, what are we going to do, what are we going to do, particularly the seniors?
I would imagine the kid would rather do that.
Yeah, well, what do you think?
I was having a discussion with a few of my classmates today, actually, last period. And they tended to exhibit a greater interest in going another full day as opposed to an extended day, just because that's a long time.
Okay. But when would they want that day? Would it be on a Saturday or an April vacation or at the end of the year?
There was talk about replacing an in-service day with a school day, things like that.
The only in-service day we have is this Friday. And then, now remember, you need to make sure you capture that day before June ninth. So you can't go, you can't tag it on during the June. So you either have a Saturday or an April or this Friday.
When I was listening to the options, I thought the April break seemed the less, the least intrusive, in the student opinion, I would say. I agree with Lucas when he said that.
You know, we're all chuckling because there's no, you all sitting there saying, I want this.
Their parents, their vacation plans, that might be.
Digital snow days.
An extra hour for five days, as a parent, an extra hour for five days, you really mess up like work schedules, daycare schedules. You really mess up with parents for five days, an extra hour. Really hard.
Well, a Saturday is then.
If you want, let's just spend a couple minutes with the board. Give me, give me your basic sentiments. Let's go through it without any prioritization. A Saturday.
No.
An in-service day, which is this Friday.
It's Tuesday.
Or April vacation.
No.
That's it? Because you have to do, we have to do that by June seventh.
I think no matter what you decide.
I'd say it doesn't matter.
Okay, all right, just fine.
There's one more, but it's not going to be Memorial Day. It's probably not even legal, I don't have any idea.
Okay. So if you're okay with that, we'll decide as administrative team Tuesday and I'll notify you.
We'll all be equally disappointed.
That's all right. Now, let's go to next year's calendar. I do have one adjustment. March thirteenth should be March twentieth. So just flip that day from thirteen to twenty, nothing else changes. So you can see here, the advocacy from the administrative team is to start prior to Labor Day.
The in-service day should be the twentieth, you're saying?
Yes, that's correct, I'm sorry. The twentieth, not thirteenth. And we build in three storm days. And I, and I joke with people, you could build in fifty storm days if you want. The bottom line, when you get done in the year, you have to achieve one hundred and seventy-five student days and one eighty-three teacher days. That's it. In respect of how many storm days you build in. So I would ask for your first reading on approval of the, first reading of the nineteen twenty school calendar, and we'll bring a second reading back in April.
So move. Yeah, first reading, so.
Second. Discussion, so this year, the in-service day was March thirteenth, or it's Friday this Friday.
Right, March eighth, yeah.
So does moving it to the twentieth, given the weather patterns, allow maybe that time if we do need to make up a day?
Well, that's a good question.
It's not so close in the middle of the weather, but it's before June seventh, so.
Mary, explain why we moved it to the March twentieth, please.
Because Skills USA next year, this year it's on the eighth, and next year it was originally on the thirteenth and it got moved to the twentieth.
So we have to be in compliance with U T C, right?
And as an example, this year, March eighth, we have a national speaker coming that costs many, many dollars through our spruce group. So when we do in-service, we really try to do things that are meaningful for the teachers.
You might want to get back to Tony's point about the, I'm not sure if you call it virtual, the Camel Rock project this year.
What do they call it? Digital days or virtual snow days?
You might want to look at that as well. So this will be your first reading this evening of the nineteen twenty school calendar.
So I would suggest, again, that I think we need to seriously look at moving this, you know, to after Labor Day. We're only talking a couple of days. I've sent an email to everyone with a copy of the Bangor School Calendar for next year. Bangor has traditionally been doing after Labor Day, they did it this year, and they're planning on doing it next year. And that calendar incorporates five snow days. And so, again, you know, I mean, we're looking at for the, for the older students, you know, the ten through twelve, because, you know, it's a partial attendance, this proposed calendar, it's just a partial attendance on the Thursday. The Friday would be, you know, the older students would be going just that one day. That does impact anybody who would be, you know, for example, working on, you know, MDI or something like that, you know, any kind of job where they would want to be able to work through Labor Day. As Tony and I have talked about, you know, the last year, I think that it does make an impact for families, vacations and plans. But, you know, Bangor has been doing it, Bangor obviously has athletic teams, you know, they've been able to work around it. This calendar, they've got, you know, incorporates even more snow days. It's dual.
What's their graduation? Do you know?
I think it's a week later, but it's an email that I just sent you.
Last year, we said we were going to reach out and look at including, you know, parent input. And I guess that didn't happen with the. Principal's, Mrs. Briggs, did you, can you respond to what, to what degree, if any, did you seek parent? I know we've obviously met with the union, but did you have any conveyance with parents?
I have not had any discussion with the parents as far as, no one has come to me and asked for that, no.
Okay. No, because we had talked about putting it out and actually have community relations send out an invite and.
That's right.
I will, so I'll say I, like, I do remember that we always have a strong discussion around this. And as a parent, I, I agree, like, it messes up your vacation, right? But I do remember very distinctly asking some of the teachers and the administrators in the audience as to the benefits to this type of schedule and hearing just really strong arguments about how this schedule and starting before Labor Day helps them to prepare and helps the kids to ease into the school year. And so they had some really strong arguments for academics and the academic benefits of it. So I just want to make sure that we are taking both things into account, not just the convenience of the parents' vacation schedule, which I also like my vacation schedule to be convenient, but.
Is that accurate, though, that the community didn't send anything out? Because I distinctly remember, you know, Scott, I mean, everybody really kind of jumping on that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That would be accurate, yes. We did not do that. Similar to how I did not send.
So we could do it.
So we could do it. I mean, what's your next meeting?
And can residents have it be free for all of, what do you think, just maybe option one, option two, option three? Almost voting.
Field poll.
I would, if we do that, I would love to also hear from staff and administration too. Because, again, I want to make sure that the staff and administration have the most influence, they are the experts in education, and I certainly want to hear their take on it. Danielle, had her hand up.
Yeah, I teach at the high school, I teach AP class, so that extra little time is really beneficial because AP passes in early May, mine is May sixth or seventh. And because all the other schools in the South start in like August, you know, every time pushing back, you know, losing AP time. And I teach two AP classes, actually. So, you know, we're just pushing less, less time that I can prepare my students. And I know it's just not all AP classes, but, I mean, it is like a lot of time for the high school, at least I know, like, for all my AP teachers that, you know, were going at Florida and Texas, and they start in August and they're done with school in May, you know. So we have to make that, all those AP content in the last time.
You think the one day for the older students makes a difference?
What?
You're talking about, for your, for your students, you're talking one day? Because they're partial attendance, they come in on the Friday, right?
That's correct.
I mean, your AP students, that's like eleventh and twelfth grade, right?
Oh, we have, we have tenth, we have tenth.
Okay, tenth.
But what you're looking at is the, and again, I understand so many different perspectives, but if you go Thursday with a partial day and Friday with a full day, you get rid of all of that beginning part of the year kickoff stuff that needs to be done, get everyone through their classes one time, meet their teachers, do all the paperwork, do all that stuff. So then when you come back Tuesday, you're right into academics, which is a huge benefit, I believe. Again, that's my perspective.
So this is first reading. We will take it back to the Community Relations Committee, and I think perhaps the administrators and teachers could provide some way in as well. Again, this is always, always a proud favorite in this topic, so.
The key is we're celebrating, we're not suppressing it. We can have the facts, we can still make our decision, but at least we'll do it with informed information about it.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay. When does this have to be decided upon?
I'd like to do it in April, but certainly May would be the latest, because parents want to know now what's the calendar look like next year. So April, April preferably.
Okay.
So Lucas and Sarah, can you do the same kind of survey or reach out to students about what they would prefer?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great, I'd love to hear from you.
But it's the seniors.
Yeah, no one's senior's not going to have much interest.
All right, this will talk about, so we have first reading, or we had, this is for first reading, we had a motion, we had a second. Any more discussion or questions? No? Can we have a vote? All in favor, first reading for this, this calendar? Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Great.
Thank you.
Great. Next up, discuss process associated with the Hamden Academy Gymnasium designation.
We'll have Reagan and Mr. Lauer give that overview, so Reagan, if you would introduce it, please.
In our district, we have naming policy for any building or part of a campus that is going to be formally named. And we're bringing this before you tonight because we had had two prior discussions regarding the gym being nicknamed the stable. And we decided to bring it back because although it is not a request to make a formal naming, we do recognize that there is possibility that this name catches on, that the student, staff, community starts to refer to the gym as the stable, and that it could in some way either support that this name becomes a formalized name, or it also could potentially affect whether someone who would like to actually formally name the gym be either inclined or perhaps deterred from a formal naming. So what I'd like to do is bring this up for a bit of discussion, to let you know that we have looked through all of the policy and regulation around naming. We do recognize that our Athletic Committee has discussed this two occasions at length, and we are interested in moving forward to just have a nickname that is posted on the wall. And I'll let Fred share anything in addition to this, but we want to be sure you understand this is not an intention to formally name, it's not an advertisement of any sort, it's simply acknowledging something that seems to be becoming a reference point.
We'll call it a nicknaming, then?
We'll call it a nickname. Fred?
And I would just add that this really came out of, it's been kind of like grassroots, it just kind of started happening, and I would add that it has caught on. It's not that we're looking, that it might catch on, it really has, and the media has caught a hold of this and it's referred that way quite often.
In saying that, is, are there any questions around us moving to do this, any concerns that you may have? We wouldn't be seeking a formal vote or anything, we just really want to be sure that the board has full disclosure of what our intention is.
I'm trying to think of a downside, what, why would we formally call it?
Because they want to sell the rights.
Well, I mean, you give, you could always add that name, tack that on, you know, through another meeting. I mean, why can't we make it official?
If, if we have a formalized naming, we already have our ad hoc committee established through the Athletic Committee, but we would need to move for formal naming to have public participation in that decision. There are a number of groups that we would have to seek approval, and it's certainly something we could do. I think at this time, we, we weren't thinking that there was a necessity to do that.
I don't know if it's a necessity, but I'm, I'm just trying to think, why not? Why not?
But why is it needed?
And then, of course, there's a procedural, I understand. I think we could possibly maintain both if someone was to name it, wanted to have naming rights at some point, I think it'd still be the stable, maybe such and such at the stable or.
Yeah. I think I went to UF and we had the swamp, so the Ben Hooper Stadium, and that was the swamp.
I'd like to ask Sarah and Lucas to, just from your own, where you are, I mean, does having, I think I'm, I'm thinking in terms of student ownership. So this is something that arose, I guess, out of the student body. So calling that space the stable versus John Q. Public Gymnasium, where are you on that?
I think referring to it as the stable really kind of emphasizes the community of Hamden Academy and the students themselves, having, you know, brought this kind of tradition up that's really become more prevalent in the past couple of years. Especially, I think it began with the hockey side of things, it's like the stable as in the hockey rink, but kind of it's evolved into everything having to do with Hamden Academy, meaning the Hamden Academy Athletics and the gym and things like that. So I've even heard students refer to the turf stadium as the stable. So it's kind of just a general thing.
I think it really comes, I've heard it a lot with basketball games. People come, they couple size the games, and then they tell the student body to pack the stable and to attend the games. And I think, yeah, it really unite us, I think it's a good idea, so. I think that'd be the general consensus among all students.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Are we saying it, we're really thinking it's a nickname, not a formal name, so it isn't, we're changing policy that doesn't anticipate.
That's correct. That's correct.
We will be coming back to you for a formal naming request once our ad hoc committee has worked through naming the turf potentially alumni field and seeking donations for papers to bring our alumni back in some form and encourage community participation and ownership in the space. So we will start that formalized process. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, next up is setting meeting dates.
So I made a notation of community relations instead of meeting. So that's Chair Lester and Amanda.
So, Amanda, well, Reagan, you're on the table too, and Scott's not here. So what works? I mean, I'm pretty open. Mondays and Thursdays don't work well because they teach until quarter to seven in Augusta.
Usually after, so after work would be my preference.
What about, if we want a pretty quick turnaround, try to get a survey pulled together Wednesday the thirteenth?
I have a, well, I have a 5:00 PM meeting for work on the thirteenth. Usually I don't. I could, so I could probably do like the late one, six or seven, six-thirty or seven.
What, what about Tuesday the twelfth?
Tuesday, I'm policy twelve, if it was at five, I could.
I have a, I have a finance committee, I was going to see if you're around at four, either of you, or is that too early for being after work?
I could do maybe four-twenty, a meeting that goes right up to four in Bangor.
Okay. How's that work for you, Lester?
It would, it pass. It poss, uh, no, that, that day, unfortunately.
I can do the eleventh, but I think he said Mondays.
Yeah, then I could do the eleventh. I could do, if we had to, the eighteenth, 'cause it's our break.
I could do the eighteenth between five and six-thirty, I have meetings on either side.
I could probably just five-thirty.
I'd do five-thirty, I'd have to leave at six-fifteen to get to the next meeting, but that should work.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Five-thirty, eighteenth.
And do we wanna make that basically a one agenda, one agenda meeting?
I think other than that, you have Ed Committee, Finance, Policy, Behavior Review, Budget. What about Athletic Committee, Keith?
We have one scheduled for the twenty-seventh for our special board meeting.
Oh, thank you, yes, I see it. Yes, okay, thank you. And the special board meeting the twenty-seventh. All right, there you go.
Any other meeting dates?
Rick, waiting down watching the Yankees?
I am leaving the thirteenth, and I'll be back the twenty-second.
I'll be down there for the thirteenth for the Red Sox, I have a spare Red Sox hopefully to borrow.
Give it away, you know?
So, I will ask that someone read, read the executive session.
I suggest or I request to be going to an executive session, discuss personal matter accorded with one MRSA subsection four oh five six A.
Okay. All in favor?